I'd like to call the meeting to order if we start with pledge allegiance to the flag. Immediately following pledge allegiance to the flag, we stand for a moment of silence to honor those serving in armed forces, both here and overseas, and for those who've made the ultimate sacrifice in their loss of life defending our freedoms. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty becomes justice for all. Thank you. This meeting's open for public commentary. Is there any public commentary at this meeting? There also will be at seven o'clock. Now we'll close public commentary. We can move to the business item what we're called order for tonight is consideration of approval of township officials' compensation for terms beginning May 2013. I'd like to begin to remind everyone here that basically we're setting the salaries for the offices, we're not setting the salaries for any of the individuals here. Basically, there'll be an electoral process in between now and the next term. So it's a hard thing to do, but we've got to take the individuals out of the equation here and actually look at the office. And I'd like to start out by saying this, I had a lengthy discussion with a young couple in the past few days. Basically, they were talking about their tax bill. What had happened with their tax bill is they pay their taxes in escrow. So they had an $870 payment, now it's over $1,100. It's a young couple just starting out, and basically, it was due to the bank telling them that because of the taxes, they're going to have to increase the withholding on it. So I mean, that's the story throughout the township, throughout the village. I know property tax, that's a key word. I can also tell you from experience, from knocking on doors, that is the key word is property taxes. And I know myself personally, it's starting to get, the taxes are going higher and higher. The reason why I bring that up is basically what happens here at the township is we actually levy for the tax dollars out of real estate. We collect them and then we actually disperse them at that point in time. And I believe it's the board has to do due diligence to actually do it in the most economical way and the most efficient way possible. I also like to look at the economy, the state economy right now. Economy pretty much flatlined. It's, there's, are indicators that it's going back up. And to start the discussion tonight, I'd like to say, I'd like to see personally, a pay cut 10% across the board, throughout the whole board. I'd also like to see the trustees paid per diem. Basically, that's on attendance. And also, I like to see the highway commissioner's office, the health premiums capped at 60%. So we pay 60% of it. But on the, on the bright side, I'd also like to say that I like to tie this into the urban price index, so that if the economy does come back, basically, the salaries will begin to increase, or they will basically stay the same throughout the next four years. So I know it's a painful thing to say, I actually hate to see this, you know, come to this, but in order for us to work on a levy, to levy less money from the taxpayers, I think that's something that we need to look at. And I actually brought my tax bill here tonight to say how much does it really cost? And I know we always talk about it's only going to cost a few dollars here and there, and the township are the smallest portions. Basically, if you add up my, the tax bill on a town account, I pay $130, and then on the road funds, I pay $320. So, so we're looking at like, probably $450, I'm guessing next year it'll probably be in the $500 range. So I mean, it's becoming a substantial portion of that. And I say that tonight so that basically, if we could control our salaries as elected officials, we could actually put the money back in the other services that are provided for the township. So again, I'd like to start out with that. I think that should be the beginning of the discussion. And I know everybody here has a different view, so we can go ahead and discuss it. And if you'd like to, we can actually take one office at a time and then discuss each and every office, so.
Just so I can reiterate, 10% pay cut across the board, pay trustees per diem, cap health.
About 60%. We pay 60%.
And possibly tie it in through the urban price.
And tie it into the urban price index. So if they're frozen for four years, again, if the economy comes back, and let's say it's 3% or 4% comes back with a bank, the elected officials will receive a salary increase.
What index?
It's the urban price index, like consumer price index.
CPI.
CPI.
CPI. 3%, by the way.
But again, this board is comprised of individuals, and I know that's, each of us have our own view of what should be done and what each office does. And again, with the, I can talk about the township office, and again, let's take the individual out of it. This is, I'm not speaking about the reimbursement or the pay of Bob Howard or the salary of Bob Howard. I'm talking about the salary of the supervisor's office. Currently, we provide, well, by law, we have to provide general assistance and optional emergency assistance. Basically, the office now, we have a part-time, two part-time employees that actually are in office, so that we can keep the office open with office hours, and they service the individuals. We went through probably the worst economic times in history since the depression. We dispensed a lot of funding. The funding was obtained partly through the levy for the general assistance fund, but it was also dispensed from Salvation Army and donations obtained from the individuals in the township. Other townships actually provided us some items for the food pantry, so we helped out a lot of people. And, and again, what happens is, is it's like a cycle when school starts back up, or the tax time comes around, people basically have to quit paying one bill to actually pay for another bill. So, I'd like to tell you that firsthand.
Can I say something?
Sure. That's on the supervisor's.
I pulled up a couple articles out of the paper that are just recent, August 29, 2012. Officials in 31 suburban townships get automatic raises. While most American workers have spent the past four years getting by with stagnating wages or making even less than in the years before, a segment of government employees is doing just fine. Elected officials in 31 suburban townships combined to make $661,387,000, more this year than they did in 2009. In many cases, they gave themselves the raises, and they're getting ready to do it again. And I have several articles I can print out, if anybody wants to look at them. The Better Government Association is contacting townships, wanting to know right now, what are you doing about raises? Most townships that I contacted are not giving raises due to homeowners losing their homes and increased taxes is what's outpricing them.
And also, I'd like to add with the per diems, with the trustees, we can put, excuse me, stipulations in there as far as if it's a case of a sickness or death in the family or something like that, that they will still be compensated. So, basically, that way, if they go for percentage of attendance, if someone, the general public would look at it, it would actually be very reflective of the proper way to do it, so. And again, we just have to look at each individual office. Remember, take all the individuals out of the office now. When we talk about the highway commissioner's office, we're not talking about Jerry, we're talking about the office of highway commissioner, that type of thing. And recently, I just heard an interesting statement that said basically that government doesn't actually create jobs, it's the private sector that does. Along that lines is, I'd like to improve that saying and say basically, the government, our local government shouldn't be in the business of creating a job for an elected official, we should be basically depending on the private sector to actually provide those jobs and those employees. And again, this is not any discussion about our employees, whether it's assessors' employees, the general assistance employees, or the loan bridge employees. This is entirely about the elected officials, so. But again, this is what we're here for tonight, so. And again, each, you know, each individual here has a opinion, and I think we should express it, so.
Well, I partially agree with you on some of the things. As far as a per diem, I don't agree with you, only because there's so much we do outside of a meeting.
Sure.
That if you're only going to pay for the kind of meeting, then are you going to still be doing all the other stuff, not really the trustee, are they going to do the other things?
Sure.
Like the scene of breakfast, the movie nights, the Christmas thing, the, what's my fault? I don't know what we're just talking about.
The fallings.
We're just talking about that.
Memory.
That kind of thing. So the per diem, I mean, I can't speak for everyone, but I know, I don't, I'm not a trustee for the money off this thing, because you're not going to live the life off of that.
Correct.
But I think it's become, I think that would become a nightmare to track some of that stuff. If you're only going to pay for the meetings, that's one thing, but if you're going to pay for all the other activities.
Oh, no, no, this is only a meeting.
Just the meeting.
Per diem meetings only. Not, not, just basically if you attend a meeting. And again, Dan, if you have a vacation schedule or something that's going to interfere or work-related, I mean, we can put that stipulation in there. But again, this is for the office. Let's say that next term, a trustee gets elected and says, okay, I'll see you in four years.
I think we average though 250 meetings, and I don't think our meetings have gone over two hours, and I just don't think.
No, Dan, I didn't mean each individual activity, no. By any means, no. And again, we're public servants, that's the other side of it, too, so. And like you said, if they try to pay us for all the time we put in.
And someone could become elected and not show up.
Correct.
Collect a paycheck.
I think regarding a per diem, it's like, we're part of a team, and if I'm, it's like a baseball team, and I'm a starting pitcher or I'm a reliever. If I get, I make one pitch and get an out, then I make my money as a reliever. And if we're being judged by, or being paid, if you will, a big sum by what we do here, that's really not, that's, it's the wrong parameter to judge what we do. So, and if we have special meetings, or there's a, whatever the case may be, and I think it's a, I view it as a salary, that it's an annual thing, not a weekly, monthly, daily, it's annual, so. I think it works the way it is now.
On the other foot side, I do agree with you as far as tying these into the CPI, and also capital benefits for trustees.
Yeah, for sure. Let's, and I, I'm a big fan of the EAB, because that's how we, that's how we're funded. And if I run this like a business, and I know it's not a business, but if the business is not producing the income that you were planning on, then, well, something has to happen. And, and I'm looking, I look back and compared our EAB's drop the last three years, but it's only really a 6% reduction since the last time we sat at this table beside salaries and whatnot. So, on the other hand, I think we're doing a good job of spending the tax dollars wisely. We get, it seems to me, a lot out of our money, with the senior programs and transportation and staffing this building and keeping this building in shape and all the other things we do. So I think, I think we're providing a good value for the money. But the fact of the matter is, is that we've lost approximately 6% in EAB over the last four years, and I think that should be our guiding guideline. And I think maybe 10% is not, whatever, it will have you, but if you go back to where we're, where we started this, 6% less, whatever, they would adjust things. And then looking, as I mentioned last week, or last month, if we don't raise salaries or any, any expenses here, that's effectively a reduction, because prices march on, price of gas goes up, price of electric goes up, insurance goes up and things. So, so just by holding it even is equal to 2 or 3% of a reduction. But, you know, so I think we should consider that when we allocate. So, and then, well, the other thing, well, the insurance issue regarding the, the road commission, I think that's critical. That, that's kind of a, it's kind of a unknown factor. I can, I can predict hours and manpower, but insurance, we cannot control. So we need to have some kind of safeguard, I think. And I'd like to add maybe some type of contribution by the employee. It might even be 1% or $1. It's just a fact of the matter, this is not for free, this is something that costs money. And if you open up that avenue, that there is a percentage of money being paid by the employee for their insurance, then if we need additional revenue, we go to the employee and say, what do you want to do?
Again, this is not an employee, it's an elected official.
Well, I mean, talking about.
In the eyes of the public, this is an elected official.
Right, yeah. Well, we don't have insurance, so.
But that would affect, what do you mean, the cap, the 6% of the employee, are the elected officials paying the other?
Correct, elected official, not, let's not use the term employee.
Right, okay. Yeah, all right, whatever. But maybe that could be transferred down.
Well, and that's, that's where you should be going, the elected official, and we're paying 40% of the rest of the insurance.
Correct.
Okay.
So if this does go up to five grand or 10 grand a month.
But there's a cap on it, I mean.
Well, we could also put an additional cap, not to exceed.
Yeah.
X amount of dollars. Which, again, you know, there comes a burden of responsibility with being an elected official, and this is the burden that we're carrying right now. And I mean, it's, these are, some are going to be unpopular decisions, but at the same time, again, everybody's paying high real estate taxes out there. And we can say, oh, you know what, don't worry about it, it's only going to be $3 or $8 increase on your tax bill, but it all adds up. And I mean, it's adding up right now. And I know the other taxing bodies at the intergovernmental agreement there, you know, they have to look at it, and then, in the meantime, it looks like the school district's going to raise theirs somewhat because of the situation that they foresee in the future. And, you know, again, it's, it's up to us.
I believe, I don't know.
Sure, go ahead.
The school district? I wasn't aware of it myself until I talked to the superintendent, well, the ex-supervisor actually told me. You know, it was because of that, the reason the school districts is going up, because I question it, because, you know, I get heavily bombarded with them, you know, when the tax bills come out. And I was told that it was because of the building, you know, that new school, the bonds that were issued, and it's a 20-year, it's for 20 years, and that's why the school district rate is going up.
Hi. Up another article, hope I'm not boring anybody. This is out of the Daily Herald, "Healthcare Perk Proves Townships Need Scrutiny." The Daily Herald editorial calls on voters and residents to pay more attention to township governments in the wake of an on-guard report that suburban townships have collectively spent more than $1 million of taxpayer dollars on free healthcare for elected officials. And they're already knocking on doors at townships. And it's going to be this board that's going to, you're going to have to give them an interview of why, when everyone else is having to pay more and more for their insurance. And it's, I'm not trying to be mean here, but this is reality. We're being hit hard as taxpayers. And it's in all the papers, and this article follows the one about closing township government because of wasteful spending, and officials have to pay nothing for all their perks. And I know I'm a newly appointed trustee, and I hate to come off the bad guy, but this is reality.
Jerry, you have a comment?
Well, just for the world, world commissioner's spot, there's one little difference between the world commissioner's salaries and stuff than the board. It's been history that the world commissioner has the full-time, which the salary reflects that. With any other full-time job, there is healthcare that's included somewhat, sometimes into it. I mean, it's not, you have another, you know, full-time job, I mean, we have to pay taxes, the road commissioner has to pay, the road commissioner's office has to, if he owns a house in the township, he has to pay taxes too. I mean, and it's just the same, same property taxes that everyone else is going, and you have to make a living, the person has to make a living at it, or the person will not be able to do a full-time position. I've just pulled some statistics up from Will County. This is Will County, the people that drive the yellow trucks up and down the road up here, from Will County. A foreman there, $76,000. They have full insurance, they pay 1%, of their salary for they're single, or 2% for family. That's Will County, that's, you know, that's, that's just a foreman, that's not the boss of the, of the county. Is that 76,000 plus benefits? I mean, that's where I have to, you have to respect the office of the road commissioner is, it is, you know, it has been for the last 60 years, it's been full-time position, and the salary has supported it. If you don't support a full-time salary, you are not going to get a full-time highway commissioner, because you have to make a living. I mean, and I would take on anybody, yes, I'm an elected official. I mean, I, and we should, as elected officials, not, we shouldn't sacrifice ourselves and our families because we are, we elected to be an elected official.
You're not paying the 1% or 2% right now, correct?
And I understand that. I mean, that's, the church package is a big thing, and it's going up constantly, I struggle with all that. My, I mean, my thing is, if you don't, you know, my pitch on is to keep the highway commissioner at the salary he is right now, and if they won't pay the 2% of family or 1% of single, and keeps lunges the same as the employees of the road district. It's not like the highway commissioner has a special fund, it's the same thing that the employees get into. You know, it's not a special rate, yeah, it's not a special rate that the person get. And to come back on some of those articles on the paper, there were, and I don't know statistics right now, there was a lot of board trustees that were taking full family healthcare for, as a trustee, as a part-time job. I'm fully against that, if it's not a full-time job, they shouldn't get, you know, health benefits.
They're talking all.
Yeah, but I mean, they're, they're lumping.
They're talking supervisors, they're talking everyone. And you know there is a rep out there that wants to shut down township government, and you know, we're here, we're, I mean, I consider this as my civic duty to sit here on, and on the board, and I just.
So what do you, what do you suggest to put in your thoughts as far as overall salaries or by either the office or by whatever?
Well, I was looking, and I think you made the comment, Creed does 82 miles of road, is paid $38,000, works Monday through Friday, 9 to 3.
Can I talk you right on that one? Do you know the history over there? The history, they used to be, eight years ago, they had a full-time highway commissioner that was making over $60,000 a year, and showed up one hour a day. And they, one person got elected to it, and he had his full-time job and collected the full thing, that's why they reduced it down to, to what it is now. This gentleman that's running it now, is the first time they had a highway commissioner in there full-time.
I do know Tim Miller. But Homer, 140 miles, $56,000, insurance, yes, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. And there's a couple of them I've seen, and you're at 72 miles. And I, I just go for the 10%. How much money is that on 55,000? And is that, is the 10%, would it be the 55,000?
Correct.
Or all? Would that be?
But then if you take 10% plus the 7, 40% off of that, it's coming down to 27% of the whole pay.
Oh, for the health.
I mean, that's a 27%.
If you cap the health.
And if you've done what's, what's weighing on the table right now, that's 27% top pay.
Right, but we're going to have to look at each one of these, the pay and, I think, come down the middle of the road.
Correct, and the reason why that was put out there is initiated the discussion on. And again, Jerry, remember, that's the problem that we have tonight, is we don't know who's going to sit up here at the table next term. Now, let's say somebody does, let's say we kept the package the same, or let's say we increased it by 5%, and somebody else is elected, and they decide to come in one day a week, or one day a month, or whatever, then who made the decision? This board made the decision to allow that. And, and I had kind of thought about this, and again, this is the office of, let's look at the office highway commissioner. Basically, what we're agreeing to tonight is, if we agree to it, we say, okay, you know what, we're going to create a position that has no, it's an elected position, it has no supervisor over it, none, no oversight. And you know that as a road commissioner, whoever walks in, that they can control how many employees they get, as long as they do the budgetary process. Even the budgetary process, we have really no say over the budgetary process with what you decide. They increase the levy, the guy goes to Florida, man or woman goes to Florida, and runs it over a cell phone, okay? Basically, we approve that. And, and it's, it's, it's kind of an interesting thing to say, okay, we created a position for an employee slash with no supervisory, and then we'll see you again in four years. If you're not doing your job, we're going to see you again in four years. And again, this is not about the individual, this is about what we're doing. And I stayed up many nights thinking about this, that's the unfortunate side of this, is that we're not approving this for you, per se. We're approving this for the office. And, and if you want to be an employee, become an employee. If you want to be an elected official, run for the office. Nobody's telling anybody at this board to run or not to run. That, that's, you know, where we're at tonight. And again, that's why we're here. We're here to hear the discussion on this, and everybody's going to present the case on the office that they hold now. And this is the guideline of the office. Now, the clerk's office, no matter if the economy's good or bad, the clerk does relatively the same amount of work. Am I wrong?
Yeah.
And then, we look at the supervisor's office, again, I'll go back to it, they administer general assistance. We went through the toughest times in history, and basically, we brought on a couple of part-time employees, and basically, I run the office through part-time here, part-time on the phone, and it's 24/7 job, okay? But it's elected official, nobody's twisting my arm saying you have to be the supervisor. I chose to run for the office. Same thing with the trustees, everybody's here by choice. We're not here because somebody said we have to be here. And it's the same with the assessor's office. At assessor's office, basically, with the downturn in economy, when we set her salary initially, we were at full steam, we were running like there was no tomorrow. We thought 5% every year.
The only thing I'm saying is, yeah, the assessed value is down. The construction, well, it's starting to pick up a little bit, you know, but basically has leveled off from, obviously, from 2006 to 2007. Okay, the workload, the, the calls now, they come into the assessor's office, are much more, are much higher call volume because of all the foreclosures, and all the people are saying, I can buy the house, you know, I can buy a house, I can get a house for $150,000, $169,000, you know, and you have me assessed at $225,000, $250,000. Of course, those sales aren't arms-length transactions, they're short sales or foreclosures. But that doesn't stop the people from calling, and they, you know, it's dealing with more irate people in this economy than it was when building was going crazy in this, in all jurisdictions. And I hear that from other assessors, but, you know, we have our monthly meetings, and it's, it's not just here in Washington Township, it's, you know, throughout, I know for sure throughout Will County. But that's why, I mean, it's, it's really, it's gotten, it's gotten rougher.
Sure.
It's gotten rougher, the job has definitely gotten rougher. And it's all due to the, people are just beside themselves, as far as, you know, I, I'm not, you have me assessed at $250,000, and my, all my neighbors can buy these foreclosed houses for $150,000. I've had more appeals.
Sure.
In the last, last two years than I had. In the last, last two years than I had probably the first.
One last comment.
Sure.
I mean, you said, yes, you know, you can hire, you hire, you want to save township money, and it's, it's just a highway position, I mean, taking me out of it or whatever, I mean, you're, okay, this person runs it part-time, and he has to hire somebody, now you have to put another full-time person in, into the position, so that's going to be another fifty thousand dollars, plus another secretary to run. So you're actually not saving money, you're costing money.
Well, and, and not to displease you, but I'd like to discuss this with you, because that was an interesting concept, because I was thinking about that, I thought, well, if you had record snow, you could basically hire part-time drivers. You have a finite number of trucks, okay? You have a summer where there's a drought, and I think what, by law, you're only allowed to mow the one time? You don't have to mow at all. Okay, you don't have to mow at all. Okay, so, so anyway, in the meantime, let's say there's record rains, and the stuff's growing up, or whatever, again, you could upstaff by just simply hiring part-time individuals. Now, what I'm looking for you, from you, though, as a highway commissioner, but as Jerry Meyer can answer this question, maybe it's more labor-intensive now that you have township roads, maybe you're rebuilding all of the roads, I mean, that's the stuff that we really need to hear, you know, to say, okay, yes, that's a justifiable salary. But again, remember, if Jerry Meyer's the next highway commissioner, or John Doe, or Mary Doe, you know, we also have safeguards built inside of it.
And I understand that part, you're, but in one turn, you're punishing, you don't know who's going to have the position, but then you're punishing the person that might get the position because he might not get it, or...
Sure.
And the thing with the roads, prime example is, we've done MFP money out there on Eagle Lake Road for one mile, a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for a blacktop road, beautiful road.
Yeah.
I didn't spend a dime on motor fuel money this year because I had to recoup my funds for that one mile of road. We have seventy miles of road, and you do the math of one mile every other, every other year. We done Plemmy Road three, four years ago.
Correct.
Built it up from scratch, where we learned where prior administrations didn't quite have the, they weren't anticipating the, the, the volume of heavy load we saw. We just done, prime example, the one on Corning Road from Plemmy to State Line, Wayland Road, to do that job, we done it, I think it was, in the number of twenty, twenty thousand dollars, twenty-seven thousand dollars for that mile. Yellowhead had one mile done, we saved forty thousand dollars by doing it ourselves, for the same job, for the same thing, for the same, you know, that's just for the top layer. I mean, yes, you're not, you don't know who's coming in, but why should someone be punished for doing the job that they've come to? I mean, the person comes in part-time, he's going to have to hire or force, you know...
I, I don't, I, I don't like the word punished. We're elected officials, we're here to work a budget, the taxpayers are the ones that are hurting. And I know you're seeing that out there, you're seeing the homes empty, and, and it's, and, and some of them got like two hundred a month to four hundred a month increase, I talked to people just Saturday. And that puts them, they, they took a decrease in pay from their job, they're paying more for, for insurance, and now their payment goes up four hundred, only, and it's not Gerald's fault.
No, it's not the assessed value, I, just as long as this is being taped on, like, the assessed value went down this past year, six point seven percent across the board.
And we're a taxing body.
And, and I, I understand that, you know, we...
But I'm not, don't feel I'm wanting to punish.
But we have, I have the same increase, I mean, I, I don't have another job. I mean, and it's, it's, it's not maybe personal or not personal, if you have a full-time job, you have, I mean, you have to do part-time work to make it work, you don't have the option. My insurance went up, my, my taxes go up just like everybody else's, mine went up, I don't know how much this last year. I mean, I still have to come up with the increase, and I mean, that's...
So Jerry, could I, could I add? This unfortunately is my third go-round with this situation, which is every four years we have to do this. I've been sitting at this table, this is the third time I have the privilege to do this. And road commissioners always is the hardest one to determine. And I've looked at the numbers, I've looked at the lane miles, I looked at what Troy Township makes, and what Homer Township makes. And what's evident to me is that since before my time, many, many years, and since I've been on this board, that, this number has been, has been, been looked at, examined, cross-examined, and what we decided over the past many years is that we want a full-time commissioner to give us full-time service for this amount of money. And you can't compare us to Peatone Township, we can't, we're just our own world here, we're doing, we're doing what we felt was right, and we have been doing it for many, many years. So, I think it's, it's not about you, Jerry, but, but it's, it's about the people that preceded you, it's the fact that, that I'm actually quite proud of what we've accomplished on this board. We, we don't spend money crazy, we have accomplished so much, and we have added services and, and features and things for people, and when, when the, when the newspaper comes to Washington Township, I hope they do come here and say, yes, you're right, you are getting a bargain here, because you could go to Will County, you want to see waste money, or go to Springfield, you want to waste money, but we're spending the money right, we're doing it right. And I'm very proud of what we've done. So, anyway, the fact of the matter is, I think, is that the salary is, has been carefully calculated for years and years and years, and, and now it needs to be adjusted based on, in my opinion, the EAV, and, and I think that the, the system that's in place is working very, very well. We, we get excellent quality service, we have backup, we have, we just get good service, and, and I think it's worth the money we're spending. So, I think we should start at that point and make an adjustment for the percentage lost in the EAV.
I, I agree with you, Ted.
So if I'm understanding correctly, just affecting the, the healthcare cost itself, that's part of our portion of that, using a lower overall cost, it will offset part of the EAV changes. And you're looking at, this, this is the next four years. I make a motion that's, as current, there's a sixty percent cap on insurance for the highway commissioner position, and they're tied to the TPI, if it increases more than two percent, the elected officials receive a...
Okay, go slower, Dan.
Yeah, read it again, Zoid.
Salaries are in, as they are, so basically...
So salaries frozen.
Salaries are frozen. There's a sixty percent cap on our portion of the insurance for the road commissioner's position.
Sixty per, you can't have a cap of sixty percent. So sixty percent, now what happens, we've got to put a dollar amount on that, though, as a cap.
You have a motion, you need to get a second before you discuss it?
Okay.
Sixty percent.
Hey, is there a second on this motion, so we can discuss it?
Go, sir.
All right, Ted, Ted's second.
So what you're saying, the dollar amount, I don't know how much, how much of them need to fill coverage, that's what we're gonna be...
What's his coverage, Tom?
And is, will there be, will he have to pay any...
Yeah, forty percent.
Okay.
Personally.
Forty, forty percent, and then you can't put a cap, I mean, I wouldn't, I mean, that would, if it goes up, then you're still paying your portion, or do you want to double, you want to put it on forty percent plus the cap, that it doesn't have to be...
Forty percent plus a cap. We could put a two thousand dollar cap or something, you know what I'm saying, if it got out of control? Because now you, here's the other situation, you're picking your own insurance policy, you're picking whether you get an optical download, you're picking, you know, your deductible...
It hasn't changed, I mean...
Correct, but, but I'm, what I'm saying, though, Jerry, you still have the freedom to pick that, so you could pick the Cadillac policy, and all that we're saying is, we're only going to pay sixty percent of it. So if we don't put a cap on it, you know, you could be insuring half of the township that so choose, you know, so that's all, you know, what we need to do, so...
So you're capping the both?
Correct.
Plus a cap for that?
Plus a cap, a dollar cap. Sixty...
In real terms, various, various medical insurance last fiscal year was twenty-four thousand...
No, no, he said cap. Pardon?
Twenty-four, what was it?
Twenty-four, seven hundred and twenty-five.
Twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five?
Yes.
That's as of today?
That was fiscal year, in March, very first twenty-twelve, that's the most, the most...
So what's sixty, what's forty percent of that?
Approximately ninety-six hundred, ninety-seven hundred dollars.
So you could put a twelve thousand dollar cap on it, you know what I'm saying? Dan? That, well, sixty percent...
Employee pays.
We're paying the sixty percent.
Okay, so what's, what's the sixty percent?
But we know it's, we know its insurance goes up, so it's going to, and I take...
Yeah, but you're, you're going up, though, you're getting sixty percent of it every year, Jerry, so as it goes up.
But you're putting a cap on it.
Well, we'll put a cap on it, so it doesn't get exorbitant.
Would it?
What's six...
Based on last year's numbers, the township would pay fourteen thousand, eight thirty-five, and then, like, Jerry, the road commissioner would pick up a cap on it.
But what I'm saying, Jerry, we could put a sixty percent cap on it, and say, okay, we can set it at eighteen thousand dollars, not exceed eighteen thousand. So at least we have a cap on it, so it is controlled. Does that make sense to everybody?
So amend the motion to be...
Well, let's finish your whole motion, though.
And that's, okay.
Well, that's, now we can discuss all the numbers at once. Now, what about the rest of the, this is just highway commissioner, or...
No, this is across the board, as far as the...
So are all frozen salaries?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody gets a frozen salary.
And then we tie it to the C.
Oh, okay, urban price index.
If it increases more than two percent, then the elected officials get a comparable increase. If it doesn't increase more than two percent, we leave nothing.
How are you going to work that one out?
Do we have to?
Yeah.
If it went up two percent, we'd go to...
No, you can't, we got to set our salary, we're done.
No.
So...
That's what I'm saying, if it doesn't increase at least two percent, consumer prices, we don't think any change at all, because the salary will stay the same full-time. If it increases over two percent, I'd say it increases three point five percent, the elected officials get a one point five percent increase for that, for that...
So if it increases three point five percent, they only get a one point five percent, or do they get all of it?
No, one point five.
Okay, so it's only over...
So you're capping it at one point five?
No.
No?
And over two percent.
Is it over two?
And we would get the difference. If anyone crazy went up six percent...
And now would it include highway, oh, okay.
If anyone's crazy went up six percent, we'd have a position get a four percent increase for that, just to get it.
So salaries are frozen across the board?
Yes.
And then, basically, if, if the urban price index or consumer price index, if goes over two percent, we would receive the difference over two percent.
Correct.
So if the economy comes back in a strong way, if it comes back four or five percent...
It'll take some years for that to happen, so I think we're...
I think that's a reasonable...
Yeah.
So the only thing I would need to amend on the motion is, the cap on, is it a cap for a maximum of eighteen thousand per year for insurance?
The township will pay sixty percent?
For a max of eighteen thousand.
Now, we have one, one other issue that's about, and it's because of the law now with the compensation, like, uniforms, that kind of stuff like that, that, that has to be included in the ordinance.
Yeah, that would all be part of the same, that, that...
But we got to disclose that.
Yeah, and that's on, I think that's on the, the stuff we got last time, that, where it is, this and that, I don't remember where that was.
No, we, that would have to be in the motion. We can do, we can do a three thou, yeah, we can do a, because what, Tom, what's the census? It's like about...
Is three hundred dollars a month, uh, bounty you have?
So thirty-six hundred dollars a year, we can give them a twelve hundred dollar allowance.
Okay.
Not to exceed twelve hundred dollars. Let's, let's go through all the discussions first, and then we can make the, amend the motion one time.
Can, can I just make a suggestion before we go on? This is Ted, my fifth wonderful time going through this whole board. And what has happened in the past is that there's a motion made for each, basically for each position, with an actual dollar amount. Okay, so there would be a motion for each one, and then there would be another motion for, when it gets to the salary of the highway commissioner, then you could add the various caveats, as it were, to those. Then that information, after you, we would go through each one of those with a motion, and then after that, we would take that and put it in a resolution, and pass the resolution following meeting, okay? So this is, this is, you know, all salaries are frozen, I can do that, but it's not very clear to the public when they read this, well, what's the number, until they see the resolution at the next meeting. So it'd be easier, I think, and a lot clearer for everybody if it was done in probably that format.
Sure.
Now, we have a mo, you know, the motion's on the floor, so, you know, we need to deal with that at this point in time.
You can't have a motion on a special meeting. Yeah, a special meeting was called for, it's perfect. But our next meeting is about five minutes or four minutes right now.
Yeah.
So why don't we, so amend the motion to table it?
Yeah.
Or withdraw the motion?
Withdraw the motion?
Okay. Motion's withdrawn? Okay, I make a motion to table this to the, or, there's a second with Ted, Ted?
Withdraw the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So have it. I make a motion to table this to the next meeting. And it's on the agenda already, so... Okay, seeing no further business, the chair entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye so have its order. Thank you.